Seems great.
Super stuff.
Talk about huts.
Just sweeping now.
Oh, welcome everyone. It's 6:30 and tonight we have one study session topic. The Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan Scoping Discussion and I will turn it over to staff for that.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. The presentation may be a little challenging if we have black screens. Alright, alright, thank you. So, apologize. I realize we're fully staffed. So yeah, ready to go, but first of all, I wanted to, I know I gave a brief announcement last week, or last month, excuse me. But I did want to introduce Matt Knight, the Director of Community Development. Is that what you're doing today? And then we also here this evening have Brian Gardner, who is the interim Director of Economic Development.
I guess, good to see you.
I always forget which one. Actually, excuse me, acting. So yeah. So before you this evening, we have the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan. We'd like to talk a little bit about some of the past plans that have occurred. A little bit of history behind why this is coming to you and then talk a little bit about scoping for the potential subarea plan. So yeah, agenda as I mentioned, background, study area, talk a little bit about kind of what we think might be some some good borders and what our rationale was there. Project goals, then of course question and answer. So first of all, kind of what is a subarea plan? The city has done a number of planning efforts. So we've done a lot of corridor plans. We've done a lot of, yeah, right now we're working on a rude renew, which is more of a parks plan. But it's very rare that we do a very in-depth subarea plan. So that would take a lot of different things into account. It'd be a little broader. Project downtown is probably one of the better similarities that we have. That one was even more focused though because it was really set for that streetscape, what the city wants for that streetscape. So that one drilled down a little bit finer on one topic where we do want to be a little bit broader, a little more encompassing in this. We want to first of all acknowledge that we have a unique historic character along Littleton Boulevard. So historic preservation is going to definitely be a part of the conversation. We did have a presentation before Historic Preservation Commission at last month as well. So had a good conversation there and brought out a number of ideas for additional thoughts on scoping of the project. Previous plans, and include all of them, we did, there are a number of historic planning efforts along Littleton Boulevard. And one of the questions might be like, why now? Why this section again? Because we have looked at it and once again, it's that overarching goal of trying to be very comprehensive. Taking into account a number of items, building off of what a lot of this great work has been. Because oftentimes these other plans really focus on either a little bit of character or mostly historic preservation, et cetera, and trying to kind of bring all of that together into one location. And then building a roadmap forward for recommended outcomes and implementation measures. Study area discussion. So this might be kind of an interesting shape for the area. But a couple of things. One, you know, we're looking at going up to Powers. And one of the reasons is we do kind of want to look at that, or we're proposing, and this is where we're going to, we're gonna ask for a lot of input here too. Proposing to go up to Powers. For one thing, you do get that whole block there, so the full depth, because the residents behind Littleton Boulevard are definitely affected by what happens along the Boulevard. But also because we have a transportation component. And our transportation master plan really talks about Powers as being a key connector for a lot of our bike and pedestrian infrastructure along this, in this area as well. So trying to pull some resources there instead of doing a separate corridor plan along Powers. Maybe bringing it into this effort, looking at it from a transportation, a broader transportation perspective as well. On the west side, right now we just have a kind of a dashed area between Crocker and railroad tracks. And part of that is because that portion, most of that portion, at least the commercial part of it, is currently within Project Downtown's project areas. So that's something we're still trying to navigate and trying to decide exactly, you know, do we do much in the way of overlap, et cetera. But regardless, if we do not have this area in the actual project, study area, we would still intend to pull over any historic initiatives so that they would encompass the area because we have, you know, four, if not more, of what we call tier one resources, tier one buildings in that stretch. The south side does dip down to the southaways because we're trying to capture that entire commercial, multifamily, residential and there's a little like flex, not quite industrial, but flex commercial in that area as well. Just trying to kind of capture that whole pocket. Heading east, we've had a lot of conversation on the south side of Littleton Boulevard heading east. Had a lot of conversation about what exactly do we do with the residential? Because that's a single-family residential neighborhood that's really, that's really well-established there. So does the study really pick that up and spend kind of time and resources looking at that established neighborhood? Or does it do something like this or even just go straight to the street? The reason why we're proposing just a couple of homes in, which seems like a kind of an odd, odd location, is just because some of the, some of the, there's a few driveways on Littleton Boulevard, et cetera, that we could try to look at when it comes to streetscape improvements, et cetera, and how those are treated. There's not many. Most of them front the residential streets heading north-south out there. Then taking it all the way to the east, so picking up the high school, all the way to corporate limits. And then doing kind of this interesting jog north on South Broadway. That is also a commercial pocket that shares a lot of influence with Littleton Boulevard. A lot of that was also within the South Broadway Corridor Study, but I don't believe it got quite that deep. And we do have a couple of parcels, you know, kind of that northwest corner that have the potential to be redeveloped. So that's a little bit of our thought pattern behind this proposal. I'll continue and then I'm sure we'll come back and talk a little bit more about it. Project goals. So Historic Preservation is an excerpt of one of the prior plans. And you can kind of see the prior plan broke it out into tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four buildings. So items that had higher, what this individual or this study deemed higher significance were tier one. But we'd like to develop a character area to ensure compatible design. And then explore ways to heighten or increase preservation efforts. Whether that be creating an overlay district, additional zone districts like downtown, or you know, any recommendations as to whether we think, you know, pursuing landmarking or designated other structures would be in the mix there too. So that's one potential, you know, project goal. Second would be this multimodal connectivity. So this would really be focusing, bringing the transportation people in and really discussing the preferred streetscape. What we'd like that to be. And then linking, you know, the bus service there along with any bike, pedestrian, automobile, all those items into, you know, into proposed goals for future implementation. And then economic development. So we do, recently, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy was adopted by the city. I'm Brian here to give just a bit of an overview. But a couple of the items that we've talked about is researching incentives that might strengthen local businesses along the corridor. Maybe looking into, you know, a special district or something and then further explore branding of the Mid-Mon Mile, which was something that came out of a prior study as well.
Yeah, so I'll use the acronym because it's a little bit easier than not. So the SIDS, that was recently adopted in March, as you guys probably are aware. Really kind of provides a foundation for, I think, this next phase of work for Littleton Boulevard specifically and looking at kind of that economic development piece of that. So we are, we're excited to get going on that. A strategy has not been adopted by the city for economic development in the city since, I think, 2012. So we're long overdue, so we're back in the game for that. And really what it is, it's a roadmap for our team to do what we, you know, what we do every day. But also what we should be looking long-term at doing down the road as well. You know, all the things that make us economically viable, you know, viable community, short-term and long-term. So I think, you know, with the, has anybody, have you received, actually like a copy of this? Have you received this document and said, okay?
It was in the package.
I know, that's right, that's right. So I know a couple of you participated in some of those efforts and the pre-planning efforts that went into this. So definitely thank you for your efforts on that, your help with that. But I think it does again build, kind of, we can build off the foundations of this for the economic development piece. And I don't really have a PowerPoint to go with this right now, but there were, if you'd noticed, we call them the pillars, the strategic pillars of the plan. And so some of those are like business vitality and adaptability, workforce and talent attraction, fostering a livable economy, enhancing historic character and cultural fabric, supporting industry and investment in city infrastructure and regional economy positioning. So I think we'll see threads of that come through in the subarea plan as well as we develop that further. So we'll definitely be looking for your input to that as well and your thoughts as we progress on that, so.
Yeah, well, thank you, Brian. And then we're also including in project goals, housing diversity, seeking opportunities to increase housing diversity and capacity along this corridor that would align with the character and vision as well. So part of the overall planning would be to talk about character of the corridor. You know, especially on that western edge, that between Crocker and the railroad tracks. There's a predefined character there, you know, the larger green space, et cetera, and the front yards. And then once you head a little bit further east, it gets blended a lot. Do we have a vision for that and what it looks, what we're interested in having it look like throughout the corridor? Or maybe it's not a single vision either. Maybe it is several, depending on that location. One may not be the perfect fit for the entire stretch. And then contemplate how best to transition between the more commercial uses in zoning along Littleton Boulevard and the primary single-family resident neighborhoods in the north and south. So currently we have a couple of projects that are under construction or in the works or recently completed. And making sure that, as best as we can, ensure that there's suitable transition between them. Project phasing and outcome. So outcomes, create a, as I mentioned, a completely comprehensive, multi-discipline subarea study. And then a community-driven, community-driven outcomes and recommendations for implementation efforts pertain to kind of the items I went into further detail on the historic preservation. And are we interested in zoning districts or overlays or design guidelines that would be, that would have a little more enforceability to them? Marketing branding and revitalization of the corridor, and then develop preferred street cross-sections. And then funding. Funding is an item. This, this study was proposed post-budgeting of the, for those last year. So staff is working on the funding and part of that goes into the next item, that, the potential phasing. So because this wasn't an item that was originally budgeted for, it came a little later in the process, that we have to have more conversations with city council, which we'll have in about two weeks. But the idea that maybe we do a smaller Phase One, where we look at existing conditions and identify nodes, et cetera. And in the, while working with city council through the budgeting process to be able to do a broader Phase Two in the new year. That's, you know, potential, but we don't really want that conversation to hamper what we're talking about here. We want to have a broad conversation here. What would you like to see if you had, you know, if mine was no object as a scope? What items would you, you know, would you, do you find to be valuable and important in a subarea plan? Deliverables, as I mentioned, recommendations on how best to preserve historic assets. Corridor planning efforts along Littleton Boulevard and Powers. So that would be multimodal transportation planning, streetscape recommendations. Then research and provide a roadmap for economic development, set out as a potential for creating some special districts or something of that nature, or may the recommendation is not. And then zoning reform recommendations that result in stronger design guidelines and character-focused provisions. And then asking for question, or any questions. And I've got a couple or three pre-slated questions here. Are there areas of interest or concern that should be included in the scope? So interested in that input from Planning Commission. What are Planning Commission's preferred project boundaries? And does Planning Commission have preferences on priorities that the study did have to be fixed? So it kind of wants to take that like big, broad view. And then if there are, if we did have to pare back a little bit, what would be the priorities?
Start with the first bullet point, I suppose. Areas of interest or concern that should be included in the scope of the study and these are... So right now you'd say the areas that are sort of under focus are connectivity, preservation, economic development, housing diversity, and sort of the multimodal character.
Yep, and the overall zoning plan use item, yeah.
Can we talk about the land use zoning for a little bit? So when we didn't, we just redid our, the zoning plan, our zoning regs. We didn't, obviously, we didn't really talk in depth about this area. I mean, I remember we had a lot of conversations, but I think one of the things we talked about was not doing overlays in the future. Try to get away from that concept. And I don't know what the zoning is. Was that this map back?
Yeah, we can go back to that.
Okay. Because there's no key on there, so I don't know what that means. I was like, what does that mean?
Yeah, the yellow would be the residential, so the single-family. The kind of purple, there's two different commercial zoning districts in there. So there's a bunch of corridor mix and then there's also neighborhood commercials, so the NC district. So both of those are found within the corridor. And then the orange is more of a multifamily.
Okay, so is that pink-colored corridor mixed use?
Yeah, I believe the...
Business commercial.
They look double-checked. They do look very similar on the screen, yeah.
Okay.
Hold my other map so I can just make sure, because they get flip-flopped in my mind too. So the NC is the kind of brighter, more robust pink, or purple, I guess purple. And the CM is the kind of more muted. So on the east side of Windermere, southeast corner of Windermere, you can see the Woodlawn Shopping Center. The kind of bigger block there. That is a CM property, whereas to the west of it is an NC.
So do you think that the current zoning wouldn't accommodate the planning process and the development there? Whatever improvements that need to be done?
I think that's a phenomenal question because trends in planning have gone away from overlay districts, 100%. That is a trend and I think that that's probably one of the reasons why some of the Mid-Mon Mile items were built out within, within the ULUC but not actually adopted. So we have a lot of language that's just kind of hanging out there in a draft format within the ULUC that we could, you know, bring forward in the future, but that was designed as an overlay district. And that's also one of the reasons why I think this study could analyze, would an overlay be appropriate? Would other zoning be appropriate? And one of the reasons why, you know, I bring this up is because of the character of the area. So that stretch, that NC stretch between Crocker and railroad tracks is, has quite a bit larger setbacks, right? It's got a little bit more tree lawn there, et cetera. But once you hit the CM by Woodlawn, that really wants to push buildings up to the front. And maybe that's perfect for this area. But at the same time, I think that's part of what could be discussed and get that community input to determine. And if it was something that we didn't want the buildings to be directly, you know, on the street within that built-to-frontage, that either having a more specific zoning for it or going to NC, maybe it's as easy as going to NC. All of those things would be nice to take a little closer look at. The other part is the historic perspective. And sometimes you can do not a zoning overlay, but like a historic overlay. So, sorry.
I'd like to pull back before we get further into this. To the larger question of what's driving this and what do you, what is the goal here by the subarea plan? I think I've seen a few comments at council that they've been asking for Littleton Boulevard to get some attention and focus. So something's wrong with it in somebody's view and there must be a vision or some idea about what its future is going to be or what it should look like that it's not looking like. So maybe that's something Brian wants to talk about. I know, I feel it's a very moribund corridor. It's got a lot of, it's underdeveloped. It's under, the commercial lease spaces are not driven by big dollars. There's a sense of it kind of being sleepy for a long time. But I wanted to, maybe you could fill us in on what's, what's driving this? What's the need that created this? And that might tell us a little bit of what the scope is. Because I'm looking at the stuff going up north of Broadway and it seems like spillover, but I don't know exactly what the... What's wrong and what are we trying to fix?
Yeah, I don't want to speak to the political piece of it. But, you know, I think from, just from an economic perspective on it, yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head. There's a lot of untapped potential there. You know, we have vacant properties. It's a major corridor of the city. It's connecting downtown to Broadway. We just wrapped up the Broadway Corridor Study as well, right? And so looking at the very, you know, not dissimilar, looking at the economic prospects on Broadway too, right? So just really looking at these key corridors and seeing what the potential is. But I think part of the conversation, you can speak more to it than, you know, better than me. But from the planning perspective is the character part of it. And then of course, I think the big tie-in is just the transportation piece, the multimodal, like, is it safe? You know, does it feel right? You know, all those things that you advocate for from your team. So um I don't know, we can talk about the character side.
I think on the character side, um so much of the area between St. Windermere, further east. There's a, there's a number of locations that have quite a bit of asphalt. They have quite a bit of parking in the front. So you know, is, is that the long term vision for this? Will the ULUC, which has some robust uh character guidelines about um parking where it's located, et cetera. Is that sufficient? Do we want a little different character area that would have a larger wood lawn, or a tree lawn there? Or you know, those types of items? So I think a lot of it is just that kind of, yeah, you, the corridor was originally, you know, started to build out between. You know, fifties and, and eighties when that really automotive uh dominant era in our history. And it kinda resulted in, you know, that landscaping, et cetera, taking a backseat. And is that, do we want to maintain that character or, or do we want to move towards something else?
I think we need, let me just add, but I think we need to take a little bit of control too, because I think we'll see development pressure on this corridor very soon. We're already seeing a lot of inquiries uh into the properties that are either coming available or will be soon, right? So they're, you know, the development community is definitely looking at it. And so here's Littleton uh brewing company coming in right now, right? And so there's, you know, different schools of thought on whether that fits in or if it doesn't, right? And so I'm not gonna go into that battle, but um so here it is and we're gonna see more of that.
Yeah, I've, I've discussed this in prior meetings, but I haven't really articulated it here this evening. Is that, you know, the ULUC did a wonderful job of removing a lot of barriers. And now because of that, we've seen so many development projects come up. And as these. But that's.
And interestingly not on this quarter, even though there's CM all along.
But, but I guess to where I, where I was gonna end with that point is that we're getting kind of that low hanging fruit being picked off. And then we'll probably get sites that are a little harder to develop and that might be this corridor. So I, I agree with you, as of right now, we haven't seen it. But I do think that, you know, the bigger developers are going to start to, to finish some of the easier developable locations and look elsewhere.
And from the strategy standpoint, you know, city council had their retreat in February. And this was one of the top priorities that came out of that for us kind of community to focus on is, is really identifying all the things that they had just talked about in relation to this corridor. It's become really important to the council to define those pillars and those things that we were talking about in relation to that. So uh you know, the why behind it, unfortunately, you know, I've been sitting here for, you know, three weeks now. So I wasn't at that retreat specifically to give you the background. But we'd be happy to get back to you in relation to, you know, the context, right, as, as the why, if that's helpful.
And I think we're going to talk a little bit more about that in two weeks as well. Because we're gonna have a similar scoping, but then we're gonna have to have a little bit deeper discussion on, on your funding, et cetera, as well. At, at state council in a couple of weeks.
But there, I know that we've had discussion about trying to uh transition this into an area that's more pedestrian, bicycle. Other modes of transportation friendly because right now, I mean, cars just zoom right down Littleton Boulevard and typically, yeah. And there's nowhere to walk. You can't walk, you can't ride your bike, you can't do anything except drive a car, basically. And um part of that too is that those cars zoom right by the businesses on that street as well. And there's not a lot of um friendly infrastructure along there or natural environment like trees and landscaping and islands. And you know, the traffic's really fast. So I know we've had discussions um around this corridor where we went into depth about certain things. So my opinion on that has not changed. I think it's just to make it more uh people friendly and when that happens maybe. Right now it's not real attractive in terms of anybody wanting to actually go there and stay or intentionally visit. Except maybe Cherry Creek, Cherry Cricket or Precedent Brewery, right? And there's a few little shop, I mean, there are places along there, but.
Well, there's such wonderful historic assets along that stretch and, you know, is there a way to highlight them?
Yeah.
Well, the challenge with the historic assets is they're spaced far apart because in the mid century, they're, they're scattered. The really tier one and tier two ones are. And so, you know, when you go out to Lost Coffee or you coming out after a burger at Cricket, you don't think about walking around to see these assets like you might do downtown. I think to Cherry's question, which I think was really good, it's like the zoning question here. We've already given it two of the most generous zone district designations we have. The only thing we could do to ratchet up to make it more attractive to development from a developer, we'd put it all into CM. Which gives you eighty one feet height possibilities, no setback requirements, all kinds of flexibility. But most of it is already in a CM. So it, it, in terms of scope, changing the zoning, we'd have to almost invent a new zoning to make it even more attractive. Cause NC is pretty attractive too. So I don't know how much room there is to move to Cherry's point about rezoning. Yeah, the, the residential yellow could be, but, but I just wanna finish this. So we've already have a quarter where the, the zoning options for development are as liberal as they can be in Littleton terms. And I hesitate to put overlays or anything, cause that actually makes it, that's a new contingency on the thing. So we're moving, if the goal was to see these things loom and get development and drive economic and, and real estate development interest. Putting things like overlays in is the opposite direction. It makes it a more challenging, you've got to meet certain design guidelines, you've got to fit in a certain character structure. And that's not the same direction. So that was my question is, what is the direction we're seeking? And that might inform what our zoning choices might be.
I, I appreciate that and I do think that getting uh some more information from state council would be, would be beneficial to me. Because from my perspective, I've heard a number of people talk about how uh, you know, the, the transition may not be quite there. Or, you know, be concerned about those things. So in my mind, I guess I was going the opposite, not making it as liberal um to go to the eighty one feet. You know, is there, so, you know, is there something else that can we, can we find more of a happy medium? You know, and.
NC is lower, shorter and flexible.
It is, yeah.
And that's, the whole district is at least NC, you could do an NC style development in NC and property. It doesn't, they're basically the same, it's just slightly different scales.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what else. I'll say this, I think zoning wise, it's in excellent shape for development in term, in what we have in our land use code. And there is almost nothing more I think we could do to make these properties look better. And I keep asking myself, why isn't it happening? Why isn't it, why, why has thirty years of development on this quarter been so moribund? And it isn't, and, and for the last three years, it's had really good zoning. And we still haven't seen anyone put in a mixed use building here.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges to that, we've, we've talked about this internally a little bit. But you know, the, the depth of some of those properties really isn't too conducive to a really tall building with, you know, underground parking. Um so that's a big challenge that we need to kinda work with on those properties. And you're backing up to single family residential on either side too from there, right? And that's a pretty sharp transition between the two. So how do we, how do we kinda blend that to make that work right, function right?
Tell you my idea is get rid of the parking requirements. And within a quarter mile of the transit stop and possibly all along Littleton Boulevard and certainly at Broadway, the state has just removed parking minimums. So that, that's a liberalization. Oh no, it's gonna apply also to some commercial. But, but that will be, oh man, okay, but that, that main street structure, you have smaller lots, high intensity economic activity. It, it, it's telling that main street doesn't have parking requirements. And that may be something we wanna think about, shifting in the zoning requirements for CM and NC, at least in this quarter. We wanna really unlock these smaller parcels without structured parking and make them more exciting to turn over. But my, my, what I hear in the, in the world of real estate development here is that the, the property owners have been sitting on these properties. Cherry Cricket is unusual, cause they actually, the family that owned it decided to sell. Most, most of these old properties are not being offered up. Even though they're sitting on CM designations, they could sell for a good, big money.
I have about a two and a half year window on kind of activity in this area and watch it closely, like weekly. And you're right, it's very static, it has been for some time. Couple of new ones have popped up and they're asking maybe higher than the market's willing to, to pay for that. So we're watching those too. Um but yeah, that's, it's gonna have to spark at some point.
It seems another question is, as we talked about corridor mixed use, though, the heights of those buildings could be very tall, right?
Could be.
And is that really something, so I'm going kinda the other way, but that, that, that is wanted or a vision or should be for this corridor? Or is it a different thing? Because um that may not be what fits along there. If you think about CM, it is wide open and it, right now it's basically encouraging. It looks like transit or in a design and higher densities and that type of thing. And so does that really then fit with that mid mod mile concept? And uh I think we need to really look at that.
Yeah, and you know, for instance, we, instead of, one of, one of the big questions that we threw out as, as a planning team was, you know, is an overlay district? Um yeah, maybe the best rounds? We're not certain either, because as I mentioned, the, the trend right now, which provides us with a much more hard and fast, these are the rules, which we enjoy. Um but downtown, uh in a similar vein, has four different zone districts. And not necessarily saying that we go that far out. But is there, you know, a means of, of doing buffers, et cetera? There are some code provisions right now that do um restrict CM when it is adjacent to residential. And that has not, I know we've had, you know, those conversations in, in some planning commission meetings in the past. And typically um those items are not uh applicable when across from our right of way. But this would be, they're more applicable here where you would have residents, you know, directly adjacent.
So sorry, I just keep asking about these questions, making comments, but um the mid mod mile, is that really a mile?
Oh, I guess I haven't measured it personally.
Is it really a mile or not? And okay, and then secretly, if it's not, we should call it that. But it seems that um I realize we have needed an overall plan for the area. But there, there should be some particular focus, which is the mid mod mile, it seems. And that, that area might be an area that of concentration, I guess, perhaps, to kinda get this whole corridor going. Cause around those, that we know that we want to preserve those buildings, right? And can't really change that a whole lot. So maybe around that in this area, which is what, uh Crocker, is it Crocker on? East.
So Crocker's all the way, yeah.
Yeah. But where's the mid mod mile?
So it looked at all the way from the railroad tracks to Littleton Boulevard.
Yes.
So there, it was expanded upon that a little bit. Um and that's, you know, you kinda referenced wanting to preserve those assets, et cetera. Currently pretty much none of the, or very few of them are landmarked or have any historic protections on them currently.
Right, but that has been, there's been a lot of focus on that. There's a plan here about preserving those buildings, correct? There's a branding for that section, mid mod miles, so.
It's about a mile from Crocker to Broadway.
Okay, just thought I'd ask.
So it's probably a little over if you went all the way over railroad tracks.
Okay. Something we talked about too, uh we did, I know we, we worked on the downtown plan, I think it was. And we walked around downtown and, you know, with the, with the planner. And um we talked about what, what do we see and what do we think about these different things? And then one of those things we talked about in our group was as you come down uh Littleton Boulevard into downtown, you know, you have the bridge. And that there's no identification on that bridge in that area that you're entering into Littleton. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is, it seems to me this, this area over here by the river, the bridge, the tracks. That that might be a gateway.
So I think that, sorry, uh two things. One, um the gateway component is somewhat envisioned in the project downtown. And that's one of the reasons why it did cross the railroad tracks there.
Right.
And why um had it just kind of dashed to inclusion rather than that full black line. Um and then, you know, I, I think there's a sign just on, on the side of, or not the side, I should say. On the east side of the bridge that says Littleton on it, but maybe that can be a little, a little more robust or something.
And that the railroad owns that bridge, right, as well, I believe I understood.
Yeah, that's a good question, I guess. I know they own underneath it, we.
So you know, even doing some kind of design components with the bridge to help it be more.
Yeah, the structures are traditionally owned by the, in this case, I believe it's probably owned by RTD potentially.
Okay.
Don't know how he structured the line or whatever, but there is a Littleton Main Street Historic District sign on that bridge as you enter, coming from the east. It's on the north side of the, the bridge, it's off the back of the sidewalk.
I wouldn't be sure that Cherry, that we're gonna have gateways. I, council member Riker spoke directly about his disinterest in them and feeling them to be a bit goozy and silly. Um and not having any specific value. And, and that's a question that still hasn't been determined. Um it may be that, very possible a plan like this could come up with the idea of branding, our historic main street is, you know, Littleton, turn of the century. And this would be Littleton mid century. You, you could imagine marketing scenes, I personally am not a big fan of overlay districts or specific. Here, here's my take on, on historic preservation, we have some great buildings there. Historic preservation preserves, currently as we have it, preserves the outcomes of a particular moment. But it doesn't preserve the processes, the historic processes that get you there. And for me, what's really interesting about Littleton is that for most of its great period, that we value its historical elements. We didn't have a, a thing that preserved moments. We just had a really wonderful and loose process, people could build what they want. You wanna put a Palladian Carnegie Library where the melting pot is, you can do it. You want Venetian glazed terracotta on front of a fire station in city hall, you can do that. Here, mid century comes along and they wanna build setback, you know, filigree, modern looking things, and we just let them. Then we start doing zoning and then we start doing sort of what we consider modern historic preservation and we start preserving the moments. But we haven't really valued the process that got us so much of this beautiful stuff that we have. And it's, I kind of wish that we would do more of the old process, which is get out of the way of great architecture and building and possibilities and let them happen. And, and this corridor study, I feel like you're a little bit of push me, pull you. We have one set of incentives to kind of get control of what this place looks like and what it's gonna be. And another, which is to unlet, let it go and let people develop it and do stuff. It's, it's a tricky thing to balance, it's a, I think there's a lot of different ways you can go. Um I think it's, sometimes can be contradictory. But um, uh we've done a really good job, I think, of zoning it, except for that yellow section there. I think that the plan, it's a, it's a well zoned area for its potential. And the questions, the real hard question is why isn't it going there? And is it because we haven't told people that things have to look more mid century? Would that get people to do it? I don't think so. Um I think what Cherry talks about is more likely that it's not a pleasant corridor to be on for walking. And you might go to Cherry Cricket, you really don't wanna linger and walk even down to the IHOP, old IHOP, not to look at it, not to be, it's not pleasant to be there. And why, why isn't it pleasant to be there? That's a, that's a vibe thing. And I don't think it has to do with the fact it's not mid century enough or X, Y, Z. It's, and, and the reason planners today talk about getting out of overlay districts is that. Mixed use urban walkable areas will organically happen if you, if they're zoned and allowed to happen. But you can get in the way of that really easily with a lot of things. And parking mandates, costly parking mandates are one of those. One of the great things of a downtown is that there are no parking mandates and these little lots could be developed. And maybe we just need to do those kind of fixes. But I, I will second that, I think that, that bikes and pedestrians are held, served in this corridor. And I'm gonna say that as someone biking, you, I don't wanna see powers be a bikeway and transit and cars only on Littleton Boulevard. One of the things that makes Littleton Boulevard. One of the things that makes Littleton Boulevard so unpleasant to be on is it's loud and very wide. And they're shrinking it, putting it on a diet, making it more quieter, slower. You get up to thirty-five miles an hour in there, things we wouldn't even think about having downtown. Those are.
Forty.
Realistically, okay, and there's very few crosswalks, you know, there's a lot of structural things the city could do there. So I, I do, but I, I will say that I do think that, what was interesting to read the two thousand and five, our predecessor council, uh, planning commission talked about having bikeways on that street and integrating them. That, I think that was the right move, and not moving them to powers. Getting that brought, as, as someone who uses their bike as a, just a get-around thing, I'm not a cyclist, I'm just a utility bike rider. I, I stop and go, but I, I got, might go to Starbucks at Woodlawn and then drive, you know, bike down somewhere else. Might, might go to Stern Park. You know, you're, you're popping and going and, and having the corridor work, and I think all of our streets should work for all modes. So I, I hope that's gonna be part of whatever happens.
So are you saying, based on the scope of work, you would be encouraging us to really have that conversation about, what do we ultimately want from a zoning standpoint? So.
I think from a total vision.
So we need to look at it from both sides, both lenses, right? And so that should be part of the scope, but also from talking about the pillar of transportation mobility, that would be a critical component to informing that, that.
To me, that's the one thing that's bad here. Like, we have good zoning and we have good historic buildings that aren't drawing people here, aren't getting them walking. Like, so what's, what's not, of those five pillars, what's the weak one that's really not happening? Cause I, I, I don't know, I don't think the zoning has a lot of wickel room. I mean, maybe we take the downtown, we have four specific zones for the older downtown, maybe those should be applied here. Cause they are, they are in some ways more developable, cause they're, they're designed for smaller lots, they don't require parking. The setbacks are tiny, if not nonexistent. The downtown, even the transitionals are very, and we get up, we've had a lot of good development in the downtown area. If you think about the area on this side of the tracks, all those condos, all the economic activity there, maybe that's the zoning that should be applied here. But we have very liberal zoning here, except for parking and buffer yards. And, and our CM zones do require ridiculous treatments when you back up against residential. And that does apply in this corridor a lot, and that might be what's holding us back in terms of getting interest. But I, I actually think the property owners are, are possibly wrong, anyway.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, no, I was agreeing with Patrick in terms of, you know, getting out of the way, I think is a good thing to let good things happen. However, I think, afraid that the redevelopment incentives are quite a bit different today than they were fifty or a hundred years ago when those gems were created, right? I, I don't imagine if left to property owners' will that we're gonna get, you know, great architecture, great design all the time. Sometimes we will.
You didn't get it back then either.
Right, not always, sometimes.
Most of the two, three, and four are the same period then.
But, you know, and I'm, I was kind of sad to hear that, that, the idea of an overlay is kind of going away in, in some circles. But, cause that comes to mind as, as, as a way to achieve multiple goals at the same time. It's not just about zoning, identifying a boundary for, identifying a placemaking, a type of placemaking. Okay, we want this corridor to be of this character. But also, you have historic preservation goals, we have economic development goals. And with, by creating a boundary and saying it's an overlay, and maybe it's an overlay light, and we've got a really flexible underlying zoning that allow, that can be capped, you know, maybe it's a, a height cap or, you know, something else that modifies that zoning slightly, so it, it fits that corridor character a little bit better. To me, that, that seems like a fairly easy route to get to that idea of a cohesive district. I think, you know, coming up with a new zoning category or removing a downtown zoning category here could ultimately be the answer, but will take a while to get to. And I think this is something that has been talked about for a long time, and I think it's, there's a opportunity here to move it along fairly quickly and make something happen of it. So I think that idea of having some sort of an overlay that, you know, identifies a district, allows you to brand it, allows you to market it. And then it really allows the city to stand on it, to invest. I think the city has to be a leader here in the streetscape, in designing a streetscape that is multimodal, well landscaped. That's the drawback right now, where all, all those parcels that are, have nothing in front of them except pavement. And if the city made that first move, I think that would send a signal to property owners and developers that, that there's an opportunity there.
Yeah, I just, I, I wanna ask about the areas on the east here. Cause there's this, there's this area east of Broadway, and then you, you're going north on Broadway for some reason, but not further south. And there's, there's part of me that, when I, when I think about that section of Broadway, right? You get into like, I know you got like the Wells Fargo building right there on the corner. And then I feel like getting north of there, I know I've been to like an auto parts store up there, and it's not like a, it's, it's, it's pretty rough, which, which then kind of makes me wonder, if you're gonna start going north and south on Broadway, why don't you just, now all of a sudden, you're getting into a whole Broadway corridor issue, which I think is a, is, is kind of, kinda needs to be done anyway in its own, you know, cause that's, like I said, that's not a very pleasant street to be on either. But it, it feels like trying to take on some of this north-south Broadway is getting a little bit, kind of out of the scope of the Littleton Boulevard discussion.
Seems going east of Broadway.
Yeah, exactly, and I'm not really sure why we're going east of Broadway either, because most of that, I think, is high school.
High school and residential.
Yeah, so.
Sepulveda Broadway. Which is part of the Broadway corridor, right?
I mean, that's another.
There's some car dealers. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the seven eleven for a corner. And, and this is exactly why, why we asked for planning commission's input, hundred percent. So this is kind of, this is a draft, and, and we're happy to take that input. Yeah, there is, as you, you kind of referenced, that South Broadway corridor study that has occurred. And it does have recommendations for streetscape, for sure. It talks a little, somewhat about land use as well. Yeah, and this was, if, our thought was to drill down a little bit. But I also understand if, if it doesn't feel that in, you know, would this be a cost savings measure to maybe not incorporate a couple of those? That's, that's certainly a possibility. So yeah, this is, this is what we want, we want to get.
Yeah, I don't know that I would go east of Broadway, and I don't know that I would go north of Powers, really. Just given, you're, I mean, I know we've got that, I know we've got that new, there's a new, I don't know if it's a multifamily residential, but I think it's a retirement community that's a mixed use, that's going in, I think, on that north, just north of Powers there. And I don't know if that's kind of part of the reason why this is being included here.
Well, so Powers Place is what we talked about at last planning commission.
Right.
That's just market rate with some affordable units, so it's not age restricted.
Oh, okay.
So just, just so you know, there have been some conversations about, you know, some of the parcels to the north that, for instance, this one, we've heard is on the market, et cetera. But, you know, the, there is a chance that we are behind, behind any potential proposal for that. So we might not even, this study may come too late to really have an effect on that parcel. We don't know that yet, but that was one of the catalysts for why we did start to look further north.
Okay, yeah, and, and I think, you know, like the, the, the corridor east, right? You know, I mean, you've certainly got some influence, or you know, there, there's certainly, there might be a little bit of effect when you get into multimodal, right? Cause you've got a high school over there, right? You've got combinations of people who aren't yet driving and people who are just driving. So some safety infrastructure for, for multimodal transport, I think is, I think is the only influence I really see in that east, going east of Broadway, and just to make sure that that's continuous. But yeah, I think that if, if there's, if there's one thing that, yeah, kind of jumps out at me is that, yeah, right now, Littleton is, Littleton Boulevard, right in that section, is not particularly pleasant to be on. You know, you are, you're, most people are driving on it, most people are driving way too fast on it. And I think that, you know, some of that streetscaping, like they've proposed for Broadway as well, to take these, you know, big straight roads and, you know, put them on road diets and actually make that connection. Because, yeah, I mean, you know, echoing the sentiments about putting the, putting the bikeway on Powers, right? I mean, you've got a major bus line that goes up and down Broadway, and then you've got a major light rail line just off of Littleton, right? And all of a sudden, you're asking users that, you know, are gonna use multimodal transport and, and, and to try to close that last mile transport to take the circuitous route, which, I mean, you know, you, you think about it too, like when you drive, most of the time, you go the direct way because you, because it's the most efficient even in a car, right? And all of a sudden, if you're, if you're pedaling outside in the rain, right? Like, you wanna go the most direct way. And if you can't do that, you might not, you might not opt for that, for, for that kind of transport option. So thinking of, yeah, thinking of multimodal transport in the same sense that we think of other, that we think of vehicle transport, I think is important. Because the mentality in a lot of cases is the same, right? You know, you wanna get to where you need to go quickly and efficiently and safely. And I think that also too would hopefully slow down some of that, you know, depending on how that streetscape works. Might also slow down some of that traffic, right? It won't be as loud for both residents and businesses on that, on that strip. And you'll have, you know, the, the economic boon of, you know, of that more walking cycling district that we see when, when areas are converted to those pedestrian-friendly spaces.
Yeah, I think everybody's had good stuff that I've been filing away. Yeah, I think what Aaron was saying about, I think if we're talking about the Littleton Boulevard subarea, it needs to be on, it needs to be Littleton Boulevard, I think, and the portion that we're trying to activate. I think as far as like traffic and enabling that multimodal stuff, I think that's something that the city probably has to lead the charge on. Just because, you know, coming from my background, if, if developers wanted to develop on Littleton Boulevard, they would be doing it. They would be going out and, you know, well, not little developers, but the larger folks, they'd be going out and making offers. They'd be putting assemblies together and, you know, from what, from my understanding, that's not really happening. And I think it's because, basically, from when you go over the tracks eastbound, you're basically not really in Littleton anymore. You're not in Littleton. So I think there's, yeah, there's Littleton downtown. So I think what would be a good idea from my understanding would be a traffic study on Littleton Boulevard. Let's figure out how much traffic we've got. And then, could there be an option there for a protected bike lane? Perhaps some street parking in order to alleviate some of the parking requirements on the parcel owners? How much parking do we need? Can we do a downtown style, you know, limited parking requirement, something like that? Where the city is coming in and bringing some of that infrastructure, bringing some of that on the public rights way, that greenery, that barrier stuff, in order to then incentivize, along with, you know, economic and those sorts of incentives, to even take a look at this area. So I think that's, that's something that would be kind of where I would start is, let's make it so people wanna build there, and then, you know, like Patrick was saying, the zoning's already there. We just want people to want to build there.
Sure, yeah, just kind of hearing the comments and looking at the map here. It just seems like downtown is definitely severed by, from Littleton by Santa Fe and by the railroad. So in terms of just the, the scope of this study, it does seem like sort of a comprehensive streetscape study and, and really getting at the, the points of, or the lanes of connectivity to, to downtown is potentially where the scope could shift to. So obviously, Littleton Boulevard, as it, you know, as you go east, there's, you know, that sort of lane of connectivity dies at, you know, once you get to Bowles. That's probably the mo, one of the most dangerous sort of pedestrian intersections there. So continuing down that way, I don't know if that makes sense, but, I don't know. The, the north-south connection is, seems to be Prince. Maybe it could shift scope that way in terms of pedestrian safety and getting people to downtown more safely. Seems like Littleton and Prince are the main sort of throughfares to get people safely to, you know, pass those points of severance of the railroad and, and Santa Fe.
So one of the reasons we didn't look past the railroad was because of Project Downtown. I completely agree that, that, that Littleton to Bowles, Santa Fe to Bowles segment isn't the most comfortable either. But if I'm not mistaken, I think that Transportation is working on the corridor study for that section. And one of the reasons why we didn't kind of extend it all the way for, or proposing, I should say, because, you know, we're talking scope now. But that it wasn't kind of pulled all the way from, from edge to edge of the city was because of, we felt that this area had a little different, maybe, character, a little different nuance that we wanted to look at beyond just the transportation. The transportation is a very important part. But yeah, happy to, yeah, happy to get more information on, on the other plan or, you know, we're having the discussion to, to talk about scope in general, so.
Can I just add something real quick? Yeah, cause, cause I know you've got this, you know, there, there's, there's this study area and then there's the Project Downtown study area, right? And, and what occurs to me sometimes is that, that, that both Littleton Boulevard and then the way Main Street and Alamo, you know, it's, it's not very long and it connects over to Bowles, which is another big road, right, and to Santa Fe, which is, you know, that's a crazy intersection, right? So the problem is, because the majority of this road, again, is this super straight, you know, you know, wide-laned, you know, just, it's a thoroughfare, right? We, we've, we, it, it's, it's been designed and built as a thoroughfare, right? Whereas what we want it to be is a destination, right? And you gotta get Project Downtown and, and Littleton Boulevard, that, that road redevelopment, right? In terms of, yeah, putting it on some kind of road diet. You know, maybe you, maybe you use a, a parking, you know, on-street parking to create, you know, your, your protected bike lane. We've seen that in other places, right? But that requires shrinking the amount of traffic that you allow on those roads, right? But that also creates more of that destination feel, right? Now, all of a sudden, it's not a thoroughfare, it's a destination, right? And that's gonna be something where people wanna spend time, where people wanna live. You know, I'm, I'm sure that all the residents that are, you know, living, you know, either right up against Littleton Boulevard or even a couple, you know, half a block away, probably get pretty tired of hearing that traffic screen through it, you know, fifty miles an hour, if we're being honest about how most people drive on long, straight, visible roads. So if we can, yeah, so, so just the aspect of that is just to make sure that whatever the design is for the downtown Littleton streets, and ideally, you know, that's, that's gonna reduce the, the traffic flow through there, so we get it to not be a thoroughfare, to be a destination, that you get in sync with that for the rest of Littleton Boulevard too. That you get in sync with that for the rest of Littleton Boulevard too, is to get in sync with that. The that kind of road diet.
Yeah, I think we're. We've sort of started also to transition to the study area, which I think was the second bullet point, some of the comments, which is great. Do just wanna, you know, hit on some of the, kind of the pillars for the the plan. You know, the things I've jotted down are, you know, design standards, one thing, I was looking at some of the documentation in the background and. They had design guidelines, which do not work. Have a. With the exception of its height, the Vida building, I think, meets most of the design, if not all of the design guidelines in that earlier document. Yeah.
My thoughts would.
Yeah, it does, thank you. The. One of the the tremendously important parts of this corridor is sort of the the character of the mid-century modern, and I looked through the Midbot. Document that the, was prepared a couple of years ago. And one thing that that stood out to me is that the buildings are somewhat eclectic in terms of style and massing, so if we're trying to create. Just a amassing and setback or build-to line. That's not necessarily going to capture what makes some of these structures special. So the, you know, like the funeral home is very suburban, like a massive lawn. One of the other buildings that is pictured is right up against the street. Another building is set back a bit against the street with a concrete plaza that would be lovely to have a cafe in, but unfortunately, it's just empty. Yeah, so it's, I think where I'm going with this rambling is that it's it's really important to involve, you know, designers throughout, through this process. To to make sure we're talking to both architects and designers and historic preservationists on. What are those elements we want to capture? I think someone was making a point about it being kind of the, you know. The, it's not necessarily all the rules that were in place, it was just giving people the opportunity, and I think in places. Like you see in Europe where, you know, there's these tremendous historic districts and it's really about the form of the building. But not all the forms we have here are, you know, the same. So it's it's definitely a design challenge and it kind of highlights the importance of bringing on. You know, some design experts as, you know, standards are being developed. The second point all. You know, is about whether it's an overlay or a zone district, it's probably something we should look at, whether whether the tool is the overlay or the zone district. The the overlay could just be a set of design standards for this area, that might be, you know, the overlay. But there may be some uses we want to look at, because, you know, do we need more car washes and or gas stations on this corridor? And, you know, one beloved Circle K that I go to a lot on the corner of Windermere, developed organically following the rules and it's one hundred percent pavement. Well, okay, there's a tiny bit of vegetation along. So we, the zoning would be a tool to look at whether there's any uses for this corridor that, you know, might be allowed in. The neighborhood zoning or in the corridor mix that we'd like to remove. Or perhaps add to, maybe there's some that we missed out on. And I think a a bunch of people made a point, made points about the public realm. And, yeah, it's really important to get that kind of, you know, private property line to private property line. Corridor right as a part of this this process and. Someone was talking about the vehicle speeds and I won't kind of go fully into my. Grievances with ASHTO, but one thing I've noticed is that the lanes appear to be striped at approximately twelve feet wide, which is the same lane width you'll find on I seventy. Which has a much higher speed limit, so you're, we've designed the geometry of this street to to encourage. And then when you start descending down the hill into downtown Littleton, which naturally you're inclined to drive a little faster.
You get a ticket.
There you go, you see the enforcement there, just the the signs warning you, but. The lane widths don't change, there's no change in the geometry to go with that twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, so that's something. To take into account as as we're looking at the public realm, so those are just the notes I jotted down. Kind of the overall themes. And I think we had started talking about the area, whether this is, yeah, is is this the appropriate area to be including in the study? Heard a couple of thoughts about that, but anyone?
I'd like to, I'd like to second what I think Drew and and. That the the north Broadway stuff, focusing on the corridor is probably the way to go in this study, not. Just because you just raised the question, why not go further south on Broadway or both sides, you know, you get into, the wider you go, the looser. Zone of focus, so I I would say power should be the northern boundary. I'm in a second that Tim's idea that Prince is is actually possibly something. I'm I'm fine, I don't know how everybody else, I'm fine with Project Downtown ending X, Y, Z, but the corridor study for Littleton Boulevard, start at Prince and go. To the high school, because that's where the multimodal considerations are gonna be most. Co- uh, coherently considered, where you have really the north-south. Of Prince bracketing and Broadway, really, those are the two big brackets in this project. And so your dotted line section, that's the area that's in Project Downtown, but for the sake of this study, consider possibly just going to Prince, I mean. That that dashed line area has a a huge, I was looking at the, if you're talking about historic properties, there's a number of critical historic buildings in that. Including the municipal courthouse that don't fit midmod, but, you know. There's no reason not to in a corridor city really get the corridor or the subarea all the way, so that's, that would, I would, I would second. Limiting the north-south movements, even the south section on the left that goes into the old high school, I I'm not even sure why those single-family homes there are in this. Box at the very lower.
On Crocker, you mean?
Yeah, for Crocker.
I don't either.
If we.
I I understand the interest in in shaping development in those north Broadway parcels. And that really gets back to is how strict are these design guidelines or overlays that we're gonna get? Cuz that's the tool that you would use to 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 shape development up there, but. I'm with Aaron that if we make the Boulevard a delightfulness, there are people wanna live. Wanna be as a place. You'll have spillover effects that affect other development around it anyway, but the real focus of. The plan should be on the Boulevard and not so much trying to reach those. Gigantic parcels of Broadway, which are massive shopping mall sized pieces. Though I understand the interest to kind of like bring them into the picture too. I do think that we should go east of Broadway in this study, I think it's correct to run past the high school. Not just for the multimodal reasons, but that's a very solid one, but just because. My view of thinking about this is that Main Street is the wonder of. When people say Littleton, the there there, there's a there there, that is what people think about, and it's really the form of Main Street. When I say, where's the there there in Lone Tree? Where's the there there in Centennial? You know, nothing comes to your mind, and Main Street is so so. So delightful that I think we should rename the Boulevard Main Street, and it should all be Main Street from Santa Fe to Broadway. Like, there's no need for a Littleton Boulevard as a name, and the idea is that. Power our city as a place could easily just, it should just, could be Main Street, and the thinking that you're talking about. Narrow, when when the, when the, when the, um. Water main is dug up downtown, we're gonna probably have one lane of traffic while they trench out that. Make that the study of capacity on the right, and and shut down the lane all the way on Broadway to Broadway and just see what happens. Say, oh, we're doing water main work, it's a transportation, tran- transportation, uh, it's the plan, your TMP you put on there, right? When you're gonna do a little, just close it and see what happens, we've closed the road for six weeks at a time on Main Street when they did the crosswalks. World didn't end, so that could be your study for, could this be a viable one-lane Boulevard? Bowles to Broadway, but that that move to ca- capture Prince and to run it all the way to the end. Probably the right way to go, not just artificially terminate it, that's my sense on the boundary question.
And when I look at the boundaries, I I think about cohesion and I, you know, I think. From the King Super Shopping Center to the east, and looking at the aerial photograph, it's not a cohesive area, I mean, there's just all kinds of stuff going on from the high school to the. Narrowing down to two lanes at the end, the sidewalks are all over the place. I I would almost stop a block west of Broadway. And go and and the western boundary right now is Crocker, actually, that that block between Crocker and Windermere, I think is pretty good. In in terms of what's there now, if it didn't change, I'd be fine with it. So I I would go, you know, if you're gonna narrow it down to a cohesive mile. I would say Windermere to that block west, whatever that road is called, west of King Supers here.
And where that line now is, I don't know what street that is, that's parallel to Broadway.
Bannock, Bannock.
Oh, Bannock, yeah, okay, so.
So Bannock to Crocker.
I got the impression that the only reason we went north on Broadway is to capture the Wells Fargo, which is a high tier one or whatever.
By the way, they moved.
So who's in there, whoever's in there now, there's still a building there.
There's some, it's owned by South Metro Housing Option and will likely be rebuilt, built into housing, though they have some leaseholders still. In the commercial space, but it's a lot, a lot of it's empty.
Well, certainly a landmark, I don't know how beautiful I would consider it, but.
I just wondered, because the Broadway corridor too is another project. What that looks like there and does that, would that cover then that piece at Broadway and Littleton Boulevard? Rather than, I I'm agreeing with Craig, where it, maybe we don't take it all the way over to Broadway. Because it it's just a different animal almost, I guess it doesn't have to be, but. There has to be some consideration for the pedestrian traffic also at Broadway and Littleton Boulevard, because. If kids had somewhere to walk down there, they have a few places to go eat. But they don't have a lot of incentive to go on, probably time either for that matter, but. You know, that that that's a very dangerous area is what I'm saying.
It would. Would it be just, you know, once get, trying to get feedback and and take solid notes? Would be something where we might be interested in narrowing the scope of the study, however, allowing the transportation corridor portion. To continue because there, you know, we. I think what I'm hearing also is there's a desire to still have that connectivity to the high schools still and. And be able to bring people east and west further, but maybe not the, the like really. Negrate details of planning and and character area, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I, you know, it's very much redeveloped up by the high school. But yeah, absolutely, like, there there's that, there's the Chipotle right across from the high school, so you've got kids going back and forth there all the time. So, yeah, so whatever, yeah, whatever traffic.
Or Taco Bell or King Supers, though, I mean, a lot of kids go to the store and grab food, so.
Right.
Well, because that that's the one component that I wouldn't necessarily want to to drop off if we're, yeah, if we're gonna. Continue to have that transportation.
Yeah, I just feel like that's probably part of the South Broadway corridor. Study and improvements, that's why.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of both, isn't it?
Yeah.
The corridor city is only, really only about the roadway. It doesn't speak to zoning, it doesn't speak to building setbacks or any of this, the visual or, it's strictly a a road infrastructure. Plan and one, which doesn't have any specific funding behind it, so I'm not, i- in terms of what it would tell us about what's happening on Broadway in terms of. The future. Style of the place, it wouldn't probably tell us very much.
No, that's fine, I'm more concerned, I guess, about the access.
Yeah, this is a, Jared, this is, for me. Council really should weigh in on what is driving this, again, like, is the goal to. Create a midmod mile and 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 thus, I agree with Craig, that the focus should be as narrow as possible if we wanna. Create a specific stylistic moment and and enshrine that, whether it's code overlays, design standards. And how that fits with Brian's, you know, the economic development ideas, does that do something for that, or is that just creating a a fun thing to to market for Littleton? Or, and when I hear council talk about Project Downtown, as they did over the last two sessions. A number of council members, including Steve Barr, said. Because the city's not gonna get a lot of money from Denver Water to do Project Downtown, there's, like, it's going to all be funded from the city, pretty much. That he doesn't care, he doesn't wanna spend twenty million dollars on the four blocks downtown, he wants, he'd rather see better connections. Be built to the downtown, and some of it downtown, but he'd put five million on getting Prince and Littleton Boulevard, and maybe his vision is is more, he's thinking of. Why you should be focused on Littleton Boulevard is to, is to get some of his mon- the money they're thinking of spending into that kind of redo. That's a, that's a political question, but what's the goal here with the subarea plan? I don't know where this came from, I mean, it's relatively new to me, uh, maybe it's been percolating in the back for a while, but it, to me, council wants. Their own, and and they're really the people that should be driving this conversation as much as anybody.
And also, the other question, part of that question is, is this an extension of downtown, is that the vision for this? And if so, that's why I was talking about having some kind of. Visual tie or physical visual. Every kind of tie into downtown area, is that, you know, is that part of the goal or is it to have? A a subset, another neighborhood area or business neighborhood area, separate from downtown, but.
Yeah, I think something that that still complements it, but yet, we're not going to get the streetscape, we're not go- yeah, that's, we don't wanna make a false downtown here. Right, I I guess I don't, I don't foresee, even if we want to foresee. Even what we'd have to do to to try to replicate that in code-wise, right? I mean, like, throw out half of what we've, we've ever done and and start fresh, right? But I do think that they want an economically viable, thriving, fun place to go to as well. Yeah, and and a part of me is a little bit of a loss because I was there for one meeting when they talked about reprioritizing it and then. And then they talked about more at the retreat and I was not there, so I apologize for not having more detail as to as to the intentions.
So what I, what I, what I heard from me, I tell, and I just wanna go back to this, is. They want it to be a place to go, they want it to be a destination, right? So again, visit downtown Littleton, visit Littleton's midmod mile, right? Like, how do you make it a destination? Like you said, right now, it's a thoroughfare, so I I think. I honestly think that, yeah, I mean, if you want, you want connections to get to downtown Littleton, not just through downtown Littleton, and. Yeah, I think a lot of that is gonna come back to. Your, you know, your your street design and narrowing those lanes and and making it feel less like a highway that you're just driving to get somewhere.
And so that's what it is, frankly, that's just what it is. Get to Broadway or get downtown, that's really what it is.
And there's, I I feel like there's a lot of people that use it to get from, you know, east to west, right? Just cuz it's just, you know, you you've only got this little, you know, you've got this subsection of. Downtown Littleton, right, where it splits into one ways, but even then, I guess the lanes are still twelve feet, right? So it doesn't feel like you need to slow down, maybe when you go over the the raised crosswalks. Now that we've got those, but. But by and large, you know, you've got, you've got a lot of throughput on Broadway, you've got a lot of throughput on Santa Fe. And, uh. Yeah.
There really are no other.
Yeah, there's, there's other routes that go east to west.
Where where are they now? That's what I'm sitting here looking at, there aren't that many, I mean, especially south.
South, you have to get them in practically. I mean, ridge goes east west, but it doesn't connect.
Yeah, that's quite a distance. Yeah, I mean. That's just a fact, you know? Can't do Ridge Road, you can, but it's not like you can get.
Tunnel.
Yeah, it's not for that purpose.
But again, again, do you want people going through downtown Littleton, right, or do you want them coming to downtown Littleton? Right, or 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 even, you know, west Littleton, right, or west Littleton.
Or you want them to go through this part of Littleton, or you want them to enjoy this part of Littleton?
Exactly, yeah.
Speeding through it.
Yeah, exactly, and I think, you know.
The last c- study on this, the two thousand and five one, talked about Littleton Boulevard, and they didn't think of it as as a thoroughfare. They said it's a spine that connects these north and south neighborhoods, it's some of our denser housing, especially northeast and the multi-country. That it's a spine from which all of these new residences came into existence in the fifties. And and wanting to connect those to each other, north and south, and also to the downtown. And they, it wasn't yet seen as quite the, it was seen as a thoroughfare, but but they were seeing it, re-envisioning it in that plan as a spine. The work that we're gonna do in this subarea plan is intimately connected to the outcomes and future of Project Downtown, and I wanna underscore that. Like, the struggle that Consor had with. Like, the struggle that Consor had with designing Main Street was that they keep being told by traffic engineers and the engineering department. They have to maintain two travel lanes because of capacity requirements. And those capacity requirements are driven by what's happening on Littleton Boulevard, and all of these things have this synergy. If, if Littleton Boulevard was reined in in terms of seen as a route to Santa Fe and was more of a neighborhood-serving street. And people who wanted to go Santa Fe were taking the fast route up to Bellevue. Then the pressure to maintain two travel, every single one of the designs in Project Downtown, all three options basically have a thickening going on. They're widening sidewalks, they're chicaning Main Street, they're making a, the village has like a. The village plan is like a shared street for two to four blocks, where the cars is kind of slowed down. And this attempt to kind of entthicken downtown is contradicted by what's happening on Littleton Boulevard. And maybe council wants us to, wants to see Littleton Boulevard rethought of, and it, it, it can help what's happening. The thing in Little, in downtown, Project Downtown, could shape what's happening here, like what are these interactions? That should be part of the thinking of whatever plans are made here as well.
We completely hear you about transportation and opportunities and, and looking into, uh, what a preferred design would be. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and going to the transportation component of it too is, you know, whatever you do to Littleton Boulevard will have a rippling effect to the adjacent streets as well, right? And so that's why including Powers in it is so important, so if you're gonna do some heavy multimodal treatments on Littleton Boulevard and limit. You know, vehicle track, traffic to some extent, those vehicles, those trips are gonna go, you know, immediately to the adjacent network, traditionally. So that's why if, if, whatever we do on Littleton Boulevard, we have to have some level of intentionality on Powers as well. Because you, you're gonna have to, you, that's where the biggest initial impact will be felt in that transition.
But ultimately, when we do make a better multimodal corridor on Littleton Boulevard, its capacity increases. And a lot of the neighbors that are taking these, I mean, most car trips are very short, I mean, fifty percent of them are under five miles.
Three miles.
Under three miles, yeah, seventy percent are under five miles. It's like, a lot of these are opportunistic trips by car that when you make, if we make this right, we actually could lower the amount of cars on both of those streets. But you're right, there's a transition period where people start to know, oh, I can't get, it's really slow. Google will take a while to start going, oh, yeah, it's thirty seconds slower now, and get, they'll route people to Bellevue. And that'll, that algorithm will shift, all these things are in play. But I think, uh, it is a complicated ballet of choices that people make. But I think a plan like this has a chance to, to do the right things and, and, and help the capacity of the road, actually. I mean, sidewalks move nineteen thousand people an hour, bike lanes move between ten and twelve thousand capability. Car lanes, twelve hundred, I mean, they're really low capacity when you get to it. But we have two car lanes and no bike lanes, so everybody's on the sidewalk, you know, choosing to drive because it's easier.
Yeah, I think if we, if we tie it into the new downtown plans. I think that'll really drive a lot of the work we're doing on Littleton Boulevard. Because is that a transition area where, you know, at Windermere, we need to start slowing people down? Because we've got chicanes and we're narrowing the lanes in a quarter mile? Or is it, you know, is it a one-mile transition straight down? Kind of all those things, how it's going to tie in, because realistically, at Broadway, the, the tie-in is going to remain where it is. And in this, in the form that it is, because we need to move traffic. But moving west, I think there's an opportunity to even step down in zoning somehow. Or, well, zoning or character, whatever it is, so you're getting slower and slower into a more downtown character as you get closer to downtown. But again, if we're not tying it into that downtown plan, we can't slowly draw into that plan.
We'll, it'll definitely be consulted, just like South Broadway corridor will be consulted in, in the plan, but yeah, do we know, thank you.
Cause you know, wh- when we, Greg, when you talk about overlays or Jared, you guys, when you talk about overlays, I don't have a really good picture of what. Can you t- t- tell me what you think an overlay might be here? Like, how would we, what would, what would it be written up as, like, how would you describe it? Or Jason, have you ever worked on one of these?
Yeah. Worked on a few.
Yeah.
So what would it be, I mean, what are you thinking?
Well, you know, it has to stick batteries first of all, second rule, it, um, perhaps puts a cap on heights. Or, you know, other limited aspects of what you need, what you encounter in zoning, whether it be setbacks or parking locations or parking quantities. Or, you know, that type of thing, it could be, you know, very specific to the goals of creating a cohesive district. So I, I, and from a zoning perspective, it's one thing. But from an economic development, it could be a, a business improvement district or another downtown development authority or an extension of a development, development authority. Something that you face funding and, and development incentives on. It also could be the, the, the bones of a historic preservation, uh, overlay or a district. Maybe hopped in, or maybe it's an extension to downtown as well, so. I, I could see it serving multiple purposes, but it would probably have to be pulled apart for, you know, its zoning aspect, and it's a historic preservation aspect. It's economic development aspect. But at, at the high level, I just see, you know, drawing the boundary and, and talking about what we like. You know, to Jason's point before, I think it's important to bring professionals in that can look at the detail, getting, you know. Digging deeper on that, test fits, you know, how, I think that incentivizes people to talk about it and think about it and see what works and if it doesn't work. And ex- experts that know transportation, transportation trends and also, um, development trends. Pretty much that.
Okay, so it could be a lot of things and, and, and very amorphous and, and multifaceted, really.
Yeah, and one example, I think when we were talking about the ULUC process, or maybe it was the downtown zoning was. Castle Rock went through a, a process of doing a downtown plan and then adopted a downtown overlay on top of that, you know, around two thousand and five-ish. It really didn't change the uses a lot, but it had a separate process for development approvals in downtown, they were administrative. Uh, it eliminated all parking requirements downtown because they wanted to catalyze development in the downtown area. You know, fast forward fifteen years, and they did remove the, uh, parking exemption, uh, there are now park, there are parking requirements there now. But it, it basically provided a unique set of rules for a special area of the town.
I think I've ever been there.
I've heard some good things.
But that makes sense that they got rid of that, cuz I mean, they've got kind of a historic area too, and then they've got some. And they've, they've actually kind of expanded what looks and feels kind of like a historic area. And, uh, yeah, it makes perfect sense, actually, that they did it by, by loosening those parking regulations. I wonder too about some of those, so I think it was something that you had said about, you know, one, the on-street parking to alleviate. But then, two, the big developers, um, putting in, you know, parking structures and stuff. And I wonder if there's like, uh, i- if there's something more of a happy compromise that we could come to regarding. Some of these smaller property redevelopments and waiving parking requirements associated with those, right? Because you've got some, you've got some real small properties in this area, right? That could be, you know, could, 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 you know, maybe, maybe somebody wants to put in a restaurant, right? Or somebody wants to put in a little boutique shop, but to redevelop it into that, you know, even taking the existing building and, and redeveloping and changing the purpose of it. Now, all of a sudden, you've gotta meet these parking requirements, and what it does is it kind of slams the door on local businesses. To be able to do that with these existing properties, right, on this, on this corridor. So i- if there's, you know, again, if there's, if there's a sort of happy medium that we can come to to say also, you know, okay, well, for properties of X lot size are smaller. Right, we're gonna waive the parking requirements because we're not expecting anybody to come in here on this itty-bitty tiny bit of land. And build a twenty-story building, cuz that's just, it's gonna be prohibited based on the lot size, right? Because we've got street parking in and around that area, and then the other thing would be to do too, you know, it's again, is if we're, if we're gonna try to throttle the traffic. Down and through Main Street, right? And we've got, you know, if we're, if we're taking some of that space for parking, um, you know, you're, you're also buying back some of that. So people can actually get to that new boutique or that new restaurant, you know, on a historic property easier.
I mean, I think all things to take a look at.
Yeah, that's a good point about parking and, you know, curbside management, I mean, the, you know, the street right away in the curb is such a valuable asset to the city. How do you manage that, I mean, Denver, they, they do some of that by having no parking toe-away zones during certain hours. But then you can park there to get to restaurants outside of rush hours, say, uh, there could be opportunities for that. Opportunities potentially for creative design on, uh, Littleton Boulevard. Lincoln, Nebraska, their traffic engineering folks, uh, have looked at, uh, two travel lanes plus a center turn lane. And that gets you almost as much capacity as a four-lane roadway does. Not a four-lane with auxiliary lanes necessarily, but, yeah, I think, you know, other roadways that are extraordinarily busy. Uh, say, uh, University Boulevard, uh, north of I twenty-five in Denver. Is four lanes, no additional, you know, auxiliary lanes, and probably moves a lot more traffic than Littleton does. Even with those constraints, just some, you know, things that might be worth looking at as, you know, we get more into design alternatives. I think on the area, uh, what we may have arrived at is a consensus that maybe, you know, maybe a tighter focus. On the Littleton Boulevard, but really consider the transportation network even beyond the area shown here. And I will say, just personally, I, I thought it was weird that we only included part of the high school. Cuz a lot of, the high school property extends north.
Yeah, that's the. Yeah.
Yeah, the stadium, there's the, the yellow parcels, yeah.
Yeah, or the practice fields just don't need to be worried about, but I, I did take a quick look at the street view. Like, kind of east of the high school, and that, that area could probably use some love in terms of, uh, you know, pedestrian or improvements. And maybe a connection to the Big Dry Creek Trailhead, which is just a little bit outside of the stud area, just north of the black line, I think it's on the Powers Avenue alignment.
It gets a little interesting down there during game day.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think if we, if we are going to be including Powers Avenue, just, you know, consider the full streetscape of Powers Avenue. You know, what are, if we are, you know, sort of making adjustments to Littleton Boulevard, what are we doing with Powers to make sure it's not a super attractive? You know, cut through, we already have the traffic calming and four-way stops and cross pans, but maybe that's enough.
And it's a narrow road.
Yeah, it's relatively narrow, yeah.
I think in terms of, on this page on being multimodal, it's sort of. Focusing on car transit on Littleton Boulevard and pushing the bike, pedestrian traffic to. Powers is, sort of dilutes the potency of downtown. Dilutes the potency of, uh, potential, uh, mid-mod mile district. Taking that kind of activity away from Littleton, you know, it's gonna turn the mod, the mid-mod thing into less of a district and more of a given.
So we've discussed sort of the geographic area and the sort of the main overview, what was the third bullet on the questions page?
Oh, there's more about phasing and just, and I think we've talked about quite a few things, so it's, it's up to all of you if you want. If you want to talk.
Any, any corridor, I think, has nodes and connections, right? So, um, I, I think a, a node, nodes would be the priority to focus on if we're gonna phase it. I, I can't help but think that Woodlawn and the report that was done in twenty-two by Resha was, I think, really well-written. And he called that the, um, heart of Littleton Boulevard. And, and I think to sort of build around that as a, as a node, um, and work out from there if we're gonna prioritize things. Woodlawn Center has always been sort of, uh, had a lot of economic potential and design potential. Infill, adaptive reuse, all that, so.
On the other hand, you could say that with Project Downtown unfolding and, and. Maybe what, you could prioritize, uh, creating a good multimodal corridor first and you look on trying to develop those. Clearly a question of what, what I think is council's sort of short-term and long-term goals. I mean, still not entirely clear what is driving this, what's the key thing that we're gonna see changing. Could be economic activity, it could be more cherry-cricketty, you know, bring more action to the street. It could be a historic district idea, could be that Steve Barr wants to see connections to downtown. We're invested in to get people moving around this community safer and better and without, without cars. I don't know what their priorities are, but the phasing might be dictated by political interests as much as. But I agree that that's a really critical note, that Woodlawn was what killed our downtown in fifty-seven when it opened. Safely moved wide off Main Street out there, and it just sucked the life out of our downtown. Uh, and now it's its own sort of struggling center as other areas have pulled. Business away from it, it's the irony of development, but can we, could any plan really fix Woodlawn? I don't, I don't know, I, that's a, that's a heavy lift, we're gonna try, I guess.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think identifying node, uh, identifying nodes is as important as what I'm saying. I think Woodlawn is definitely an area of interest.
I think when Woodlawn sucked the life out of downtown, we just didn't have the population to support both. I think we do now, well, it's just my cup feeling, I have no basis in.
I, I think what's really interesting, if you do look at the map of this area, northeast Littleton is three and, there's a lot of three and four-story apartment buildings. And what's wild to me is that you get lower density on the main corridor, it's one of these weird inversions of the normal pattern. And I, I, whatever height limits we wanna talk about, there's, there's a natural height and, um, depth and, and presence of people. And the north side of Littleton Boulevard that, um, I feel should be maintained. Or, or, or built even higher on the Boulevard, the Boulevard itself should carry more, not less people density than the housing just next to it. And, and my sense of, I don't, in terms of, um, an overlay that descriptively designed mid-mod buildings. There's not, I don't know if it's really that was what they were doing in the mid-century. And, and Littleton Boulevard's development is definitely a post-nineteen fifty's paradigm, and it wasn't Littleton Station, which is one of the pictures you. That, that's a more modern paradigm, a street-facing, four-story, um, mixed-usey kind of, although the mixed-use in it is extremely limited. But, uh, you know, that's, there's nothing mid-mod about it, but I hate to see something like that outlawed by the overlay. So that's a tricky needle to thread here, and that's why I really think you have to find out. How strongly this interest in making mid-mod mile is from council and from the community, um, before you do that. Because, uh, you know, we do have, I think in a lot of ways, there's a lot of contradictory goals in this conversation, you know? We talk about traffic calming and slowing down mid, but mid-century wise, it would have been a car Boulevard, and there would have been three travel lanes, you know? You know, these are not, you can only embrace some parts of the mid-century idea and do what, what some of the economic like development side is asking for here. So it's a selective set, that's why I'm not so big on it, making it a mid-mod district. Because I think it's great as a, as a marketing idea and, and talking, really investing deeply in our jewels. That represent that and talking about it as a place, but not making the district character into a mid-mod thing. Cuz I think a lot of the, especially as you get, as you look at the mid-century, there's a lot of parking spaces in front of these buildings. A lot of car centrism in their thinking, and it's not the mixed-use depth that would be good in this quarter today. And I, I, I'm, I'm in favor personally of just not telling people what it should be. Uh, we, we've zoned everything, we had, we had, in the seventies, our zoning, we had forty zoning districts. And the, the big rewrite in nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen was, we dropped it down to seventeen. And that was considered a hugely good move, simplifying, reducing the complexity, adding another layer of four new or five new. Special, like downtown has its. special, like downtown has its another set, we're, just that complexity is not a great development direction. So I, that's my take, I'm, I'm one person, that doesn't mean anything. But uh, I just, that's in my head a lot about us getting into overlays and new zoning districts and zoning special zones and descriptive, it's the reverse of what we did in twenty nineteen with our land use code. I think the planning, community development folks still need the tools to be able to say no to those things that aren't compatible. And so the goal is to complement, not to do more. Or as Jason said, specify uses, you know, maybe we.
And that's what I was saying, even just to help tie those together to make it more compatible.
True.
Instead of not replicating that particular architectural style.
Yes, we want to go full Baron Haussmann, Streets of Paris, except brutalist.
Well, I, I think the other problem behind that too is, is as you mentioned before, is the the varying degree of architectural styles and forms and shapes. And so it's not like, you know, downtown that's, or, or as you mentioned, Paris, you know, where they tore everything down and built all about the same stories with the Mansard, you know, like made those broad boulevards and, yeah, there's just, there's too many different forms to really um to contemplate something like that. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the goal, so.
You said money is the object?
Yeah, right, well, okay.
Reality is.
You said money is the object?
He did, he did.
I said, I said, I said, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have the conversation as if it wasn't.
That's why I'm building protected bike lanes and on-street parking and new lanes.
I, I guess I did want us to to not envision what, what would be the preference first.
I know I'm not supposed to speak, and I can clarify some things here.
I think, uh, yeah, let's get with you after the meeting to, otherwise, everyone in the audience gets to talk, and this is a study session, so. I think if we can huddle after with staff, yeah. Any other?
No, I was gonna say, my only comment on phasing is, I think, what we've, what has been echoed already, but regarding to make sure that it ties together with Project Downtown. Especially and and, you know, through the, through the whole area regarding that, that transportation and and what we wanna see, not just for, you know, not just for downtown Littleton, right? If downtown Littleton needs to be a destination, then that ties into what you're doing in this, this corridor and how you're managing your transportation in this corridor too, so. Um, I, you say if you're gonna phase it, you just, you need to make sure that there's a cohesive um vision for those areas and and how that influences your, your transportation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna add on to that. And the, the Brent Soderland and Brent uh Thompson are actually in the midst of restriping designs for Prince and Church and changing the geometries of Alamo. All of the, 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 that western end of this piece is already under design, um, and I think we wanna make sure that, I think it would be good to coordinate, all of these things should be thought of together, and as much as you can scramble to see what's in their plans, you know, how they manage that turn onto Alamo coming from, they're gonna put a protected bike lane, it looks like, in there, and it's gonna have, do, will it go right up to Alamo and then to the future Al, down, Littleton Boulevard? How are those pieces gonna fit? It's not just Project Downtown, there's a number of moving parts that probably touch this, this project boundary. It probably should be coordinated as much as possible in advance so that we don't waste our money with this configuration at Prince and Alamo, and then we did something completely different on Littleton and Al, you know, come, Littleton Boulevard coming down to Alamo, that kind of thing.
Yeah, our transportation team will be a key stakeholder in this, you know, they'll, there's a huge component for this, and so.
It reminds me of how much these, we might think of these as specific little plans, but the city's in motion on a number of boundary elements and and bringing all those pieces together is really smart way to go.
Does a great job of evaluating all of those things, I mean, you've heard Eric talk, you've talked about this for hours, right? He's so passionate about multimodal improvements in the city, so, yeah, it's definitely a good point.
The good news is those, those ones at least are not super hard scape involved, so it can be undone. But it'd be nice to know how their plans at the far western boundary of this connect with whatever the subarea for Littleton Boulevard is. Same with downtown, Project Downtown.
The good conversation today is really helpful, I think, the feedback that we received, you know, and really opened up some more things to maybe think about. I think that's what we're charged with right now, is just exploring everything that was on the screen for you tonight, and, you know, the scope and, you know, the boundaries. So um, a lot of good takeaways, I think, from this one.
Yeah, absolutely, completely agree.
We didn't really talk about it, I mean, we talked about the design and stuff, but the historic preservation element of this is really important as well. I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the, you know, historic buildings that were identified in the study, and we've lost one tier-two building to a gas station, if I'm not mistaken.
We've lost a few.
Yeah, and so that, yeah, should be an important consideration as we're going through this process.
Absolutely, that's one of the, one of the core items that.
Any other final thoughts from the planning commissioner staff? Seen anyone raising their hand, so we'll, we'll call it at uh twenty twenty-one.